Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Happy Valentine's Day belated and happy Super Bowl. Um, if we could call the roll.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here, thank you. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, approval of agenda. Any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, we have a couple of things to discuss, Mr. Mayor, first of all. Uh, you'll notice on the agenda itself, under General Business, we have eight A one and eight B one that are under seven. Both of those should be seven A one and seven B one, uh, just a minor numerical change. Uh, you have the updated delinquencies, both for sewer and storm and refuse, uh, on the table. Uh, and I believe that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Brennan?
Make a motion to approve the February fifteenth agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, further discussion? Discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
My apologies, I missed something. Uh, four A six.
Four A six.
Has a, a misnumbered, uh, resolution. It currently is R twenty twenty-two, tax zero two six. It should be zero two eight. My apologies. So two six should be two eight.
Should we pull that one? Run it separately? The number's wrong. It should be twenty-six. It should be what?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
Alright. Um, consent agenda, so, Councilor.
Go ahead.
Councilor Whiting?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the modifications as noted.
Second.
What's the modification?
The four A six, the resolution number at the end, instead of zero two six, should be zero two eight.
Correct.
On four A six.
Okay.
Did you have one to pull?
Nope. Got it.
Um, I have a motion and I have a second for the modified consent agenda. Discussion. Um, before we vote on the mo- on the modified consent agenda, we would read it into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda, agenda items for fifteen February of two thousand twenty-two. Four A one approves the city council meeting minutes for two February of two thousand twenty-two. Four A two approves a consumption and display license for Dilemma Brewing Company doing business as the Shakopee Brew Hall. Four A three is your monthly financial review. Four A four sets the public hearing date of Tuesday, March first, two thousand twenty-two, for the establishment of a tax increment spending plan. Four A five adopts resolution number R twenty twenty-two, tax zero one nine, certifying assessments for delinquent sewer and storm drainage accounts from January first, two thousand twenty-one, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, adds a twenty-five dollar administrative charge and writes off delinquent accounts that are less than twenty-five dollars. Four A six adopts resolution number R twenty twenty-two, tax zero two six, which declares amounts to be assessed, orders the preparation of proposed assessments and sets the public hearing date for delinquent refuse bills. Four A seven approves a contract with H plus U Construction for Design and Construction Management Services not to exceed sixty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. Four A eight adopts resolution number R twenty twenty-two, tax zero one five, which supports housing and local decision-making authority. Four A nine adopts resolution number R twenty twenty-two, tax zero two seven, which appoints individuals to various boards and commissions. Four B one approves a five-year lease agreement with Training House. Four C one adopts resolution number R twenty twenty-two, tax zero one four, which approves a final plat for Summerlin Place, second edition. Four D one declares noted vehicles as forfeit and authorizes their disposal. Four E one adopts resolution number R twenty twenty-two, tax zero two six, which authorizes a cooperative agreement between the state and the city for the Memorial Park segment of the Minnesota, Minnesota Valley State Trail. Four E two adopts resolution number R twenty twenty-two, tax zero two four, which accepts bids and awards a contract for a hundred fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and two cents to Link Excavating Incorporated, for the Seventh Avenue West and Sixth Avenue East Alley Storm Sewer Improvement Project. And four E three adopts a professional services agreement with WSB in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars to perform a traffic impact study along County Road sixty-nine at Colburn Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Just to clarify, I want to make sure I heard. For four A six, the resolution number is R.
Two eight.
Zero, I thought we were changing it to.
Two zero two two dash zero two eight.
Correct.
Zero two eight, okay, thank you. The, uh, modified consent agenda, um, has been read into the public record. I have a motion and a second. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The motion passes. The consent agenda's been passed. Thank you very much. Item number five, now I'd like to call any resident citizen that would like to come forward and talk about an item not on the agenda. Please come forward on an item not on the agenda. Come forward, state your name and address for the record and welcome. Mr. Reynolds, have we received any electronic communication?
No, sir.
Seeing none then, we would move ahead. Uh, item number six, business removed from consent. There was none. Moving ahead then to seventy-one, uh, discussion on the library partnership. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, this is actually going to be a little shorter than what I had originally intended, mainly because as we continue to dive into what the actual status is of our relationship with Scott County on this issue, we're still trying to figure that out. Um, essentially, I'd sent some communication to all of you earlier, uh, this week, talked to, talking about, uh, what state law currently requires. Uh, important part of that, however, is, is that essentially the state law did not change anything that was in effect at that time. So we're continuing to do research to see exactly what has been in effect, uh, prior to that. And at this point, I don't have anything solid, other than we have, uh, notations, uh, from council over the years that talk about buildings, uh, being used by the county, uh, either paid for or acquired by the city, uh, to, uh, to, to house library services. At some point, uh, a- and that may be all there is, and that may be the extent of what the agreement has been from the very beginning. Uh, but, uh, as I, as I've, uh, put in the memo, we really need to start outlining exactly what that relationship is and frankly, what the term library services means. So, uh, until we have some more historical knowledge, uh, you know, I, I certainly appreciate anything that you have to say on this issue at this point, uh, as we continue to dig and try to find out what our actual status is. Uh, and I have yet to talk to the city attorney, because I think frankly, we got to have a, his, uh, nod on it, one way or the other, as to what, uh, we can and cannot do at this point. For me, I have a question is, is well, okay, if we're, if we don't have anything in place currently, uh, do we then have to follow what the current law is? Since we've changed the nature of what, of, of what we're attempting to do. That is something that, uh, I haven't talked to Jim yet, uh, but we definitely need to have his opinion on as well in the future. So, uh, that's the status of where we are at this point on the issue, and I would, uh, I think all of us would appreciate any comment or direction that you have, uh, for us as a whole, as we continue to peel this onion back a bit.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I, you know, uh, Mr. Reynolds and I met with the county here a week ago or so and discussing kind of the, the contract that we had. It's the dated contract that I think we've all seen, um, that talks about library services. And, you know, the whole idea is step one would be to update that contract, and then the information that came out over the weekend was w- what type of form is this of the library? And so we're trying to get to the bottom of that. Um, then the, the county really is, wants to come forward with an ask of what appears to be an expanded use, and we can have that discussion, but I think before we move forward here, we, we need to either update or get a new agreement, or find what type of governance structure this library falls on, um, and see where we go from there. Uh, Councilor Brennan, we'll just kind of go down the line here.
Um, I think that, um, I appreciate the information that you had sent to us. Um, and I think it is, I went back to our minutes from like two thousand to two thousand and just to see what those discussions were also. And I think it's a good opportunity for us to have a conversation with the county. I mean, we're always looking for innovation, and maybe this is an innovative way to have a better relationship and a better system, um, in the, for, for countywide. Um, so I appreciate the work that you're doing and, um, you know, but I also have, um, I'm, I'm also going back to my original, um, thought from a couple of weeks ago that, you know, I, I do think that the Family Resource Center is, is part of a sta- traditional library, um, but, but the contract and, and what our relationship with, um, Scott County has to be resolved, and, and I see that. Um, I had come across the, um, ARPA, um, schedule that they have for, for, um, Scott County and what they're discussing for ARPA, and I know that Family Resource Center expansion is part of that, and I know that they were planning to use some of their ARPA funds for the expansion in, in Shakopee. So, I think that that needs to be also incorporated in our discussions. So, I, I don't think I have anything else to say.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, and one of, one of the, the lunchpens of that discussion really needs to be whether or not it's the CAP agency that was going to be using the space when, uh, Chelsea and I had originally talked with the county. They were talking about putting a, a nonprofit in that space, and that obviously opens up more issues that, uh, uh, Mr. Thompson and I both have already discussed, at least from an issue spotting point, not, not coming to any conclusions. So if that was going to be the case, we would have to figure out how to legally do that. And, uh, you know, the easiest way to do that would be a contract for, uh, rent or something like that, if that's what the council decided. But there has to be some way that keeps us away from the prohibition that we have, which the county doesn't have, as an arm of the state, especially dealing with human services. Uh, there is only one, uh, body that we can actually give money to or support monetarily, uh, and that is the County Historical Society, and that's because it's in state law. Uh, so we would either have to seek an exception to state law, we would have to put something in place to ensure that, uh, that prohibition isn't, uh, 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 infringed upon by us, obviously, uh, or, uh, try to find some other creative solution. So, that would be my only concern with that.
Councilor Brennan?
Yeah, I do. Um, and if that is the case, then we need to address any time that a, um, conference room is being used at the library, because majority of those, um, more, majority of the time, I think they are used by nonprofits. So, um, you know, they, they go in, they, they make a reservation with the librarian, and, and then they have that use of that conference room, and, and I see it really as not much different than that, so that has to be addressed then also.
Well, that really wouldn't, that's not an issue. That's something that people can come in and they can reserve the space regardless of the, who they are. But if we're making it a dedicated space, that's when it becomes an issue. And again, those are things that we have to figure out legally with, uh, Mr. Thompson.
Councilor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Alright, I'm gonna take, uh, a lot of informational points that I heard in their presentation a couple of weeks ago. So, they really want to make the library into a outreach and intake, uh, frontline facility. Which is a much different use than traditional library, and we really don't know what the hours are. Uh, by their statements, it would be an extended hours. And then we also heard that they wanted to modify the building. So, these types of things are, are telling me that, you know, this is, this is gonna turn, uh, turn into a one hundred percent county, uh, function. And, you know, I don't, I'm not here to say what their services and offerings should be. Um, it just so happens that it's in one of our buildings that Shakopee taxpayers are paying for. And yeah, I don't know how you would write into any agreement, by their own admission in their presentation, how, you know, their vision is into the future, you know, trying to reinvent and find and modify as they go into what this is gonna be. Um, I don't know how you could write in to an agreement. You know, you just basically put in gray and capricious, and I guess you covered it all. But, you know, it's, at some point, you know, would, would we be better off either selling the building outright, or giving the county a deal on the building? Um, and just walk away from it. I mean, that we don't have the overhead cost of the maintenance and, and utilities and stuff. And, you know, if they have a need for it, it's, it's in the location that apparently they like, and it certainly fits into the larger model of most county libraries are owned by the county. And then I, you know, I think, okay, so, yeah, it's a county library, even if it didn't have any other county services in it. County means it's for everybody in Scott County, not just Shakopee. And the same would apply to any county services out of that location. So, you know, it seems to me that the city is getting to the size to where we should be focusing on our functions, and the county should be focusing on its functions, which includes just a basic library service. And with the population here and throughout Scott County, um, you know, it might be better off for all involved for them just to operate that facility, own and operate that facility like many other county libraries are. And that removes all, uh, future gray areas on what kind of changes are coming next. You know, I, I envision any, some kind of a partnership. Not that I don't want to partner with them and stuff, it, it just seems to me to be a very hard thing to achieve successfully, when you don't know what the changes would be down the road. So, I, I, I'd just assume, especially when, when we just heard they want to modify the building. This needs to be their building to modify. You know, I, I would be willing to just make them a decent offer, let them buy the structure, bu- buy the building and do whatever they want. It's, it's all theirs at that point, and it's, it's not out of line for, for them to actually own the library. So, that's kind of my cleanest take on it.
Well, those are, uh, you make some great points, and I keep struggling back, and as I did at the presentation and I did when we met with the county, what this whole concept of the word or phrase, library services. What, what does that really mean? What does it entail? Um, and I think it's, it's changing. And so what appears to be a non-traditional library service now, and trying to figure that out, I think that you know, we, we own the building, we maintain it. Our partnership on the library has been strong for a long time in that regard. Um, but then to find out that in this opportunity to expand to non-traditional library services, which I think, but others may disagree, um, we, we seem to be in a point where we don't have a contract, or a dated contract that needs to be updated. Um, and then I think we discuss probably the, the expansion of services. So, um, but those are my comments, Councilor.
Mayor, Mayor, you know, I can appreciate that. The, the problem I have with this is, okay, so let's, let's do a hypothetical. We, we come up with some kind of a contract, and now anytime there's anything different, any changes, uh, which there's gonna be, because times are changing and things change. They're gonna have to come back, and we're gonna have to redo it, and they're gonna go away for a year or two, something's gonna change, they're gonna come back, and as a county taxpayer, and a city taxpayer, well, twice for both, I don't want to pay both these entities to keep talking to each other on what to do next. It's costing, that's not what I'm paying them for. I'm paying this one for this service and this one for this service, and when they're both spending hours upon hours of time to s- see who can do what in their location, it's just not very clean and productive and efficient of what I, as a taxpayer, expect of these folks. So, I, I want to just be a lot cleaner with it here. Here's a deal on a building. You don't have to come back and see me, do whatever you want with it.
Thank you. Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I, I really think it's, uh, the county's got to, uh, done their work and found that, you know, meeting people where they're at in the library, is where people want to get the services. So, so that's good. You know, the Family Resource Center, it's all good. The problem is, like we've all talked about, is that contract and that relationship, and it is different than other cities, in, in many cases. There's a lot of different relationships, but, uh, typically, it's the county that's running the library. So if the county, you know, wants to run this Family Resource Center, do this outreach and intake, uh, extended hours, maybe modify the building. Those are decisions that the county should be making. If they ran the, if they ran the library and owned it and had that nice, clean partnership like, uh, Councilmember Lehman has talked about. I think library services are changing. I think, uh, they're dynamic and they should change. It's not always gonna be books, but it should be books, and I, I think the access to the, uh, internet is, is key. It's getting better for, for kids, but I think that's those, uh, spaces are always full, the, and the, and as well as those, uh, meeting rooms are always full. But I would agree, I think, uh, it's time to renegotiate that contract, and maybe the county should be operating that facility and we just separate. Or, uh, if we continue to do the traditional library services, and they want to do a certain portion of the building, we contract, maybe then that's rental space, for the library, however we modify, but I, I'd like the, the idea of cleanly separating it, uh, let them do what they want with their building. You know, it's, it's built, it's done, it's, uh, that part of it's at least clean.
And we wouldn't be in the, holding the asset and.
We wouldn't be in the library business, uh, and, and cleaning the building, all those things.
Um, fair enough, thank you. Uh, Councilor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I agree. I agree with everything everyone said. Um, I feel, two ma- two main things. Um, I just wish there was a, a greater understanding of the ask that the county is, you know, asking. That's one of my biggest things. I feel it's not clear. That's my thing. And I understand that, um, the Resource Center is, uh, it's in a pilot stage. Um, and things are, are still moving, still, they're, they're still, you know, um, growing or, or they're, they're still working them out. Um, I just wish we had a, a fluid discussion with the county, because we're talking, and, I mean, because that's one of the main steps we need for, to, to do our contract and update it. But I just wish we had someone from the county where we could bounce off questions and get answers. That's my thing. But otherwise, what we've all talked about, I'd like to just, you know, continue that. That's a good discussion.
Councilor Brennan?
Some of the things that I was concerned about in doing my research this week is that I looked up the, the library board on, on the website for the, um, for, at the county, and y- you know, there's no financial information on their minutes. Um, you know, they'll, they'll say it's on the consent agenda, there's the financial information, and really, there is no, there's, it's not out there in the minutes. So, it's not available, and, and, um, you know, and I don't know, I, I know there are good people on the library board, but do they, do they understand the impact, um, on the city when they're making their decisions? And making their decisions to do things like, um, just continuing to, to collect fees, or, or, or any of the other money-making decisions that they're doing? Because we are part of that relationship, and we are putting money into it, and, you know, um, that is a concern for me. Um, and you know, I, I took a tour of the, of the Family Resource Center yesterday, and just to see what was happening, and the conversations with the, the people there is, you know, I asked, are you gonna have a specific desk? That you're gonna have a phone and a computer? And, and it sure seemed like, no, we're not. We're gonna have, uh, that, a wall up at that area, and it's gonna be a gathering spot for people to get information. It's not an intake, they're not gonna be sitting down, they're not gonna be, um, phoning, there's not gonna be a specific, uh, room for a specific org- organization. Um, and, and it, and it appeared to me that when that room is not being used, that it's gonna be, uh, open for the greater, the greater co- uh, community. Um, so I think we need a better understanding of what that room is gonna be, because I think that some of, what I'm hearing from people is different. Different than what we're saying here, so, yeah.
So that would be like, uh, an additional room to reserve for any organization if it, but, Mr. Reynolds, I.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree. I think that, you know, that the county needs to come and make a specific ask, because that is not what was told to, uh, the Assistant City Administrator and I during our meetings. Uh, as a matter of fact, it was, it's totally different than what we were initially told. Uh, and it may be that it's, 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 it's been fluctuating. Uh, it's a, it's a, to, to the credit, uh, it's a pilot program. I, there's, I don't, I mean, maybe the reason they haven't come with a specific a- ask yet is because they're figuring that out. Uh, you know, two things. Uh, if we ran the library, we would be doing nothing do, different than what the county is doing. We would be trying to find ways to continue to make the organization relevant. Um, you know, so that, that, that point certainly is well-taken, I think, by everyone, and, and by all accounts, what they're looking to do is a great program. And, and I think it's important that we understand, we're, we're not talking about the efficacy of the program itself, or we're not talking about the, whether or not it should be done, or, uh, it really boils down to, uh, Uh, it really boils down to, uh, you know, this is a city-owned space, and there are a lot of. City-owned, county-run libraries under current, uh, Minnesota state law, where the city uses portions of that space as well. Uh, my final point is, is that I think we can make it work if that's what the, if that's what this body wanted to do. We, we can find a way, that, I think we can legally find a way to make it work if that's something that you, as a group, wanted to do. Uh. I think the most important thing, first of all, is to figure out what our current status is and then.
Go from there.
Go from there and get that taken care of, uh, and then have the county come in and do a specific ask as to what it is they are really looking to do. Uh, and then, and then you can make your call, and then, you know, like I said, if, if, if that's something that, uh, the body wants to do. We can find a way to make that work.
Counselor Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. I listened pretty close to the presentation and, and actually I quoted the presenter. And we were told at the, by that presentation, that it was much easier and more comfortable for the individuals that they were serving. To, uh, share what their needs are, that's an intake process, okay? Uh, in that environment compared to the courthouse, that's, that's, that's what they said, okay? So that tells me that, that, you know, they're trying to make it advantageous for people seeking services that are afraid. Uh, of the environment at the courthouse, or intimidated, maybe a better word. Um. And, and, you know, like Mr. Reynolds said, absolutely nothing with what they're trying to accomplish, I don't, that, that's great. I certainly don't want to micromanage what the county does. But it is an intake process, it's a county service, and I certainly don't want to limit them in the future, because they are gonna have to make a lot of changes. It's gonna be a work in progress, it's gonna bounce all over the place, they're gonna try different things, and I don't know how you can write that into a contract without bogging down both entities. Constantly coming back, working back and forth. I, I think it's time for, you know, my first position would be, we need to talk to them about buying this prop, this building and, you know. Help them out in the future as a city organization to make sure that, you know, if they're doing any kind of advertising stuff or whatever, that we help on, you know, them be successful. And if we're not gonna do that, and we're gonna try to work out some kind of a contractual agreement. I mean, yeah, we can get a direct ask, but that ask is gonna be specific, it's gonna be put into a contract, and that contract is gonna change a lot. And, and I just don't think that's beneficial for either side.
Did you have more?
Yes, I, I, I'm gonna agree with Counselor Lehman, but, uh, and I think the best example is, uh, you know, the, the county, I don't know if it's the county, uh, library board. Whoever made the decision, they extended some hours. Well, that was a direct cost to the city in cleaning, you know, it was ex- more, more cleaning costs, am I correct? For, uh, more people using the facilities, uh, extended hours, uh, who knows what they were doing in there. Uh, but as I was told, it was more costs, so, uh, those kind of decisions affect directly the costs that the city pays. So I, I agree, I think, uh, divorcing ourselves from that, uh, process is probably the cleanest investment.
But, Mayor, before I forget, I wanted to touch base on the financial reporting by the library board. I, I, I can't, I, I couldn't imagine something harder to do than say, okay, now we gotta go to the city and find out what the utility bills were for the month. Now we gotta go to the county, find out what their staffing costs were, back and forth, back and forth, trying to pile accurate numbers together. It's just not efficient by either side of government, and I'll tell you. I- if people don't want efficiency from government, I'd like to, like to see them come on down here and tell us that.
Great, great scale project, right?
Yeah, I, uh, you know, I, let's be perfectly clear, the Family Resource Center is already operating there in the res- reservable room. And they're, they're doing their outreach, um, at two other locations as well. I understand library services are evolving and have evolved, uh, the internet changed that many years ago. And the implementation and inclusion of computers into library instead of hard copy books. The, the area that we're talking about is the old periodical section, which doesn't exist very much, because now you can get it on the computer, but. Think about this building that the city built with taxpayer money in Shakopee and then maintains it, and then someone else uses it. Like, I mean, I don't know if this is a very good analogy or not, but I know that when I was growing up, my parents, my dad had a car, my mom had a car, they owned the asset. They maintained it, and when I got my driver's license, I got to use it. Right? And I didn't pay for the car, 'cause I, I. You know, I got to put some gas in it, but certainly if it was, if I dented the fender, my parents were maintaining that car. And then, they made it very clear, if I continued to dent it, I should get my own car. And that's part of the cleanup process, right? And as parents, we do that, we own an asset, we maintain it and, uh, for a while. We allow someone else to use it, but at the end of the day, we have an asset, we have a, a, a maintenance and. The library is, you know, I think the county's been a great partner in this situation. I also believe, 'cause we came, we talked about partnership in our meeting the other day, and. I think we've been a strong partner, 'cause we, we got the vehicle, the building, we maintain it, we, we've been doing that. All along, even with a new building, um, so our partnership in that aspect is very strong. Um, now they want to continue to use that and, and evolve and expand to, I don't know, I wrote down non-traditional library services, but it. It is something new, it's not in the normal library services, but it is, libraries are trying to stay current. This, this email from Mr. Reynolds that we got over the weekend, um, about the governance of it, to me, was really concerning. So, I kinda would like to see that squared away, and if there's a opportunity that the county buys the building. Um, would that be cleaner and better for them in the long run, then they control their own destiny? Um. It's not like Shakopee would be out of a library, right, we'd still have it. 'Cause that's what counties do.
Yeah, it was interesting, you, you speak about that email, and, and I also read the state auditor's, um, evaluation of, of the library system. And it was probably ten years old, but it talked about the fact that it was so layered in what was a library, how it functions. I mean, there was the Department of Education, there's the state, state library services, there's MELSA, there's the county, there's the. I mean, it was so layered and so difficult to, to work through it, and that's something that they had pointed out too. And it didn't seem like anything's been fixed in the last, I think, ten years that that, that occurred, and tried to get things done and, and it. It, it's difficult.
All right, last call here, coming down the line.
Yeah, just a last thought, you know, when, when I go back to my childhood and it was the library before the current library. And then when this library was built, I was on this council at that time. It was a totally different situation, because Shakopee was much smaller, but yet we were the seat of the county, still are. And the majority of the use of the library at that time was Shakopee residents, okay? And that's why the, the old library owned by the city was taken down and new and built and stuff, and the relationship continued. It's different today in the sense that. You know, the city has grown quite a bit, the, the county has grown quite a bit, and the services that Scott County provides to the broader county. Uh, a lot of that is done, well, at the courthouse and in Shakopee, so you have a lot more. Outside Shakopee, but county, coming in for these services, and that's fine, but, uh, it's, it's, it's different. Substantially different than from its inception, where it was a small, quiet library, uh, in Scott, in Scott County, in the seat. To supply the majority of the, uh, residents of Shakopee. Now it supplies a much larger audience, many from outside Shakopee, and the services that in the future that the county is gonna, wants to. Change into the, in the library are gonna serve countywide, which is fine, but it's a lot more people than what the. So what I'm trying to point out is how much different it actually is in operation from its inception to current.
Change has occurred. Uh, Counselor Brown.
I just think we need to get a better understanding of what Family Resource Center is, because I think you're looking at it differently than I am. And, and we're talking about services and, and I'm talking about sharing information. Um, because I, you know, I've had the conversations with the people, and I know that sharing information and being a resource is definitely a library service. And, and it's not sitting down and taking, filling out an application, it's giving them information so that they can go get it, um, go get it themselves.
Yep, a- and I envisioned that changing as the presenter told us it would, so I think the county, if they, if they had their way. I believe the county would use this space in a lot of different ways, many different than what was actually presented to us. Uh, as things change, they're gonna have that outreach ability twenty-four seven at that location for whatever service it is that they want to bring forward. And kudos to them for having the foresight to be able to look long-term and say, you know what, if this is what it takes, this is what we're gonna do, and we can do it at this location. Certainly takes down the security risk at the courthouse, so I, I get it, and I'm not necessarily against that. I'm actually trying to help them be, giving them as much flexibility to do anything they want that works for their programming at that location.
Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, I, I would just point out again that that's fundamentally different than what the discussion that Chelsea and I had with them. Um, and. I certainly appreciate it, but again, that, that is not what was conveyed to us.
Counselor Contrance.
Just to add, I too, um, met up with people at the library, and I have a very different, um, perspective of what is, of what their idea is. So that is exactly why I want to know what this county, the county is asking, um, from us, that is why. Because we're here discussing what we believe, yet they're over there like, no, that's not it, and we're like, well, let us know, I wanna know. I feel like it's, it's muddy water and I need clarity.
Um, I appreciate all this discussion, I think, uh, you know, I still go back that, you know. Over the last couple of weeks since the presentation, we met with the county, and then the packet came out, we were gonna talk about the Family Resource Center, and I. I don't think there's any, I think generally, we think it's a, a good service that they provide for the residents of Scott County. Um, how it fits into the library, but my, my concerns changed a little bit when I got this email from Mr. Reynolds. Talking more about the governance of the library and, and who, and who pays for what and that, and we don't have a contract. We have a little contract that talks about library services at the, you know, and if that changes, it has to come before the council. So I'd like to see city staff and county staff get together to work out this governance. And then, if we can get closer on that, then I'd like to work on figuring out this Family Resource Center and what. I think it's evolving, they're using that room, they would want a more committed room or whatever, but, um, and then learn more about that. And maybe the discussion goes into selling the building, so they can have more flexibility, maybe the, it works out where there's a, a lease situation or. Um. I don't know, 'cause we have a lot of skin in the game as far as, uh, uh, building and maintenance on a, um, yearly and ongoing basis. Uh, that building pays rent into the city, uh. Yeah, so, Mr. Reynolds, you had, I apologize, you had your hand up earlier.
Oh, no, you already got, no, we're good.
Mayor, I, you know, even if nothing was changing at the library, I still think it's time where Scott County is large enough. Uh, and all of the services at this location are county-operated services, other than meeting rooms, which we have plenty around the city. I still would say it's, it's time just to offer to let them take the building over too.
Well, and we wouldn't be, you know, we are, we have them here making a presentation, we're discussing it now, um, staff has worked on this. Um, there was a, a, a county meeting and, and a, one county commissioner and myself were involved, so. You're saying that if it was their own building, they wouldn't have that, right, but.
But even if there wasn't any changes in the actual use on the site, Scott County's getting to the size now to where. There's, there's gonna be changes in operational hours just of a library, there's gonna be technology changes at the library, even if they didn't do anything else there. It's time, I think, for them to actually own their own library.
All right. Well, and our, you know, the libraries are important, and they have changed, and I think going forward, they still play some sort of role. Um, uh, out there, but what that role is changing and evolving, I asked the, I must ask the library director, as I did when he made his presentation. When we were meeting with staff, uh, you know, wh- where do you see library services in the next twenty years? And, you know, I don't know if I got a real good answer from it, it's more of a vision thing and, and that, and, uh. And maybe no, you know, I keep typing in every day in my computer, library super services, future of library service. And Counselor Brennan, you're correct, all over the United States, there's different structures, state libraries, county libraries, everybody has, you know, in different ways, so. Mr. Reynolds, do you think you have enough direction?
Um, well, might I suggest this, we're gonna continue to do our research and try to figure out exactly what the relationship is and what the documentation is. I want to sit down with Mr. Thompson and talk about the options for the future, uh, and then certainly we'll sit down and talk with the county and, 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 you know. See their take on it, and then ask them to, at some point, to put a proposal together for city council on it, exactly what it is they're looking to do. Um, and then we can, uh, we can continue to walk this horse towards water, how's that?
Would there be in, or, at what point would we put as an option that they could buy the building?
Uh, I can, I can do that, I can, I. It'd be crazy for them to, to buy the building, they're getting a free rent space and we're putting, you know, a ton of money into it.
They're driving dad's car.
So, I don't, I don't see that, I don't see that happening. Uh, uh, I can certainly reach out and, and, and make that ask, but, uh, um, I don't think realistically, I mean. If, if I was in their shoes, I'd say, no, let's work out an agreement.
No, and I, you know, I did bring it up at our meeting and, and, uh, you know, that got a very cool response. Um, obviously, 'cause, uh, why would they want to own the asset if they get to use it and, all right.
Are we restricted from selling our own building? Just on the open market?
No, but I would really caution that, that, yeah, I, I don't see that as being productive.
Well, no, I'm not saying to, to do it, I'm just asking, because if, if we're not allowed to sell our own building because of some crazy library agreement thing. In state law or whatever, boy, that's a hell of a place to be, because now we've got a building that we're paying, you know, millions of dollars on over the course of five, six years. That, that has zero city services in it, all the future up, upkeep, and we can't do nothing with it, but keep pouring money, taxpayer money into it.
There, there certainly is, uh, state legislation that says that you can't decrease operational expenses. Uh, I do not know if that also would encompass this situation, Jim, I'm sure you don't know off the top of your head, but.
Well, the city can sell a building.
Right.
But it's subject to any agreement you have for the use of the building, so if you have an agreement, and somebody else has to use it. Let's say in perpetuity for free, there's not gonna be a lot of market value.
Right, yeah.
In that building, so, that's, that's really the issue.
And again, that goes back to us trying to figure out, you know, exactly, if, if it turns out that all we have is the nineteen seventy-seven agreement, which covered the old building. As Jim and I were remarking, well, there's a nice legal, illegal point, does this cover the new building? I mean, we already have a legal problem, uh, and so, you know, there certainly is a legal argument that no agreement currently exists. So we, we have a lot of, a lot of skin yet on this. So we, we have a lot of, lot of skin yet on this onion to keep, you know,
Working on it.
Keep working on it, you know, there, it's, it's, it's...
And I, I think we have in our strong partner with the county, I, I don't think this is really about the Family Resource Center, I, you know, whether it's cleaner that Councilor Lehman and Councilor Whiting, if they, they sell the building and they get actual better control of the, that building and the use of it, and they will have flexibility. Um, I know what they said in that meeting and that didn't, got a very cool reception, but, uh, the overall governance from that contract from seventy-seven seems so dated and un, not updated. Um, I should get that, work on that. Enough on this? Alright, thank you. Um, let's, uh, move forward to seven V one, Planned Unit Development Amendment for Emblem Shakopee. Michael will present, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, so tonight's a public hearing, um, so you probably need to open a public hearing. I think it's a public hearing, is it not? Nope, it is not a public hearing, mistake on the slide, there you go. Um, so this is an amendment of the Planning and Development Number Seven for Summerland Place, uh, for the emblem at Shakopee. This is the site, um, and if you remember, this was the original concept proposal that was brought to you, it was approved as part of the PUD with the caveat that the final design would have to come back to you. This was the original, um, building design, so it was three very large buildings. Um, tonight, Lennar Multifamily Communities has submitted an amendment to the Planning and Development for two hundred and eighty-eight units with twelve structures, and the original concept plan was three hundred units and three buildings. This, uh, these would be three stories tall with twenty-four units in each structure, five hundred and twelve parking spaces, uh, which exceeds the code requirement of five hundred and ten. Staff's currently working with the developer on a slightly revising locations of a few of, um, some of the parking areas and the buildings and garages to address some design requirements for Street G, which will be a public street. This is the layout, so they have had to acquire some of the single-family homes for additional detention. Uh, when this was, uh, shown to you originally, uh, they had not calculated the impervious area properly, so we needed a larger detention basin, so that is now included in this PUD. And the part we're talking about potentially moving slightly is, um, they're having to build Road G, which will also serve the parcel to the east, which we have no idea what will get built there. Um, it's on the market right now and they have not been a cooperative partner in this project, so this developer's actually building all of the street on its property. And they may have to adjust, um, this building location slightly to the north to give us, um, uh, full access in here to the length we need, uh, for the center line of the road for, uh, safety and for stacking. So this is their preliminary site plan, it's a mixture of, uh, surface parking and garages. They have a pretty substantial landscaping plan. Uh, structure will consist of a blend of brick, fiber cement, lap siding, batten siding, wood trim in a variety of colors, there's also a community clubhouse with a outdoor veranda, fitness center, pool, barbecue and fire pit. Bicycle parking spaces, we provide it consistent with the city code and there's, uh, extensive landscaping along the west and north property lines, um, to block the, uh, parking lots, these are the proposed apartment elevations. So the lower, that first story is all brick. And then they do meet our requirements for, uh, windows and, this'll give you a little better idea. So the front facade's broken up by a variety of balconies and different materials and there's porches over the main entrances. These again are the building materials, so, um, asphalt shingles in that gray color and then a mixture of fiber cement, variety of types, um, both board and batten and lap siding, along with this, uh, white colored brick on the lower level. And then standing c metal roofs on those porches. So our recommendation, uh, came from the Planning Commission, there was a couple items they, uh, wanted, uh, changed slightly and they were the location of the trash enclosures, we were working with the developer and making sure that those are adequate. So we asked to approve the amendment to the Planning and Development. District Number Seven, Summerland Place for the Emblem Shakopee with conditions identified in the ordinance and the developers here tonight if you have any questions.
Uh, thank you for your presentation, questions of staff? If you can go back to your first overview map? Keep going. There, right here. So, uh, St- Street G on the eastern edge of the property would have a full right in and right out?
It would be three lanes with a, also a through lane to the future development at the gravel pit.
But I would be able to come and go out to Seventeenth Avenue, I can go east or west, right?
Correct.
Okay, then my second question involves, actually, I drive by this property all the time. I guess I always felt that the tree line on the east side was the, was the end of that big hunk of property.
Nope, so Mayor and Council, the property to the east is owned by a partnership out of Colorado?
That little square there?
This section.
Little triangle?
Hold on here, let me think of this.
Oh, the whole...
This entire piece is one parcel owned by a partnership of
All.
folks out of, um...
And then the other triangle off of, uh, Canterbury is owned by one owner as well, right?
Correct, Mayor. And, um, I will say Lennar has done way beyond what you would think of trying to engage this owner to get them to participate in running the road down the middle of their property and they've had zero interest in cooperating. I think that, um, Mark Noble's been working with them to give us at least a temporary construction easement and a roadway easement, so it won't cost them any money, but they will have an easement for snow storage and to be able to build the road, including the turn lane.
Wouldn't we want that Tree G to continue along to have a little more deeper access into either Emblem's property and/or the property of the east?
I, I think the issue, Mayor and Council, if it goes any further into the Emblem's property, it starts impacting their ability to develop.
Right.
And we're developing a street for a property that, as long as I've been here, has been, have been, they've had no interest in developing. In fact, we talked to their representative and they have no vision of what could ever happen there, so.
Okay, uh, Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, now, I'll point out, and if they did come back and wanna develop on the east parcel next to Emblem and Road G is subbed in off of Seventeenth Avenue, the only option at that point would be to turn it to the east to serve their property.
And Mayor and Council, there's a slight curve built into their project so that if that happens, it happens, otherwise it could be a T-intersection at three hundred and thirty feet back and they'll have to figure out how to develop their property. They are challenged on their site, that whole backside along Eagle Creek is pretty much steep slope.
Yep. I'm aware of that.
So...
Okay, other questions of staff, Councilor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, what was the height of the original concept of the structures?
It was about fifty feet, so they're under this.
And the height of the new proposal?
I'll leave the developer to give the exact height. Go ahead.
Emblem representative, like to come forward, please state your name and address for the record and welcome, thank you for being here.
Thanks for having us. Um, my name's Peter Koopman, I'm Senior Development Manager with Lennar Multifamily. Um, to answer your question, uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, um, our proposed building height would be just under fifty feet, so it'd be about the same.
About the same?
Mayor and Council, I will say the Planning Commission liked this plan better than the original one 'cause it's not as massive and it's a little less dense.
Right.
They're at about just under eighteen units an acre on this plan.
Just under eighteen?
And then I had another question, Mayor, if you could.
Follow-up?
I, Mayor, I was looking at the, uh, site plan, if we could put a site plan up where there's two access points off Seventeenth Avenue. So, yeah, that'll work, um, so in order to get to the back units, you're, you're gonna drive through the, the project, what is the width between the actual parking spaces, 'cause you've got parking on both sides, so what's the drive lane between that?
I can't, that's twenty-four feet.
Okay.
And there is a, um, exit-only, gate-controlled, um, off, um, Summerland Way in that corner, so people that wanna leave that don't wanna go to the full access can use that also.
Gate control on the west side?
But, Mayor and Council, there's gate control into the entire project, but you can't get in, um, the west side, that's an exit.
And no access on Tyrone?
Correct.
Okay.
There, there is a pedestrian access, 'cause as most of you know, we have parkland that's up to the north and one of the things we wanted to make sure is that the residents here can get to that park.
That's a trail right up here.
Yeah. Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff, Councilor Brennan?
I don't know if it's staff or the, the developer, but is this gonna be built in phases or are you planning to do one build-out in, at a ti- in total?
Um, we're, we're planning on building it in phases, so we would, um, hope to start, um, the summer and, um, kinda open up the, uh, the clubroom and a few buildings, um, after about fourteen months and then, um, kind of different phases of the building as we build ourselves out over the course of two years total.
Okay.
So, your company, is they, are they associated with the home builders or is it a separate company?
Yeah, we are, sorry, I would've, uh, introduced myself a little bit better, not answering that question at first, but, um, yes, so we're associated with Lennar Homes. Um, they're actually doing the townhomes as part of the summer gate master plan.
Yep.
Um, so we're the multifamily-focused arm of Lennar. Um, so we, we've been active nationally, um, and then specifically in the Minneapolis area since twenty thirteen, so we now own and operate just over, um, a thousand homes in the area, so.
Yep, well, you've, uh, been a good partner with the city on the homes that you've built there, so, thank you, Councilor Whiting?
You know, uh, to me, it just looks like there's not enough access here, it concerns me that, uh, Road G, Street G is your only access point if the other one is, is a controlled access and only creates exit. Um, it's just, to me, that's a lot of, a lot of units going through that one area, especially since we don't know what's going up next to it.
Um, we worked with city staff to, to design kind of the entrances and exits and I believe it was a comment to make the uh, southwest corner there a convenience exit only, um, so it wouldn't be an egress point. Um, there was some concern with stacking there and impact to the full master plan, but, we're confident that there's enough stacking with the main entrance there with the gate access, it's RFID-controlled, so there shouldn't be many cars waiting there. And then there's actually a, uh, key code for guest access, so if you live there hypothetically and had a guest come, you could issue them a, a four-digit code they can type in and can gain access to, to visit friends and family and things.
Through the access at Street G?
Yep, so that the gate's not off of Street G, it's in board quite a bit past the clubhouse.
Or gate entrance, yep.
Yeah.
So, I guess I, did I misunderstand, you have a gate on this, the, the west side? Yep, here, I see that, but on the west side, is that a in and out or only an exit?
A convenience exit for residents and then it'd be emergency vehicle only entrance.
Yeah, so it's just only entrance from Street G.
Uh, Steve?
Um, Mayor and Councilmembers, um, good evening. Um, as part of the, uh, was it an EAW for this, there was a traffic study performed. Um, so these intersections were evaluated, uh, Street G is the, that's dictated by the county as the only full access for the site and the, uh, the Westerly Street, that is prescribed to be a right-in, right-out only, again, um, prescribed and dictated by the county. Um, as far as that west street, uh, being restricted to an in-and-out, uh, from an engineering standpoint, our public works, we're not restricting that. So that would be on the developer to control how they want to, uh, the gate's installed there, so, um, as far as access, they can have, uh, in and out. It's, um, we're, we wouldn't restrict that on our end, so, um, that's something we can continue to work with the developer on, um, but that would be, uh, their choice, we, we wouldn't need to restrict that.
Councilor, uh, Lehman?
But if you wanted to go east, exiting this, you, you're gonna come out G, even if you had in and out on the west, because you wouldn't be able to make that left coming out on the west because of county restrictions, correct?
Um, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So, and I'm taking Street G and what's going on or what's the future holds for the gravel pit across the street? I envision there'll be a light there down the line and that would make, uh, obviously must be plenty of spacing from Canterbury Road. Eighty-three.
Um, Mayor and Councilmembers, uh, you know, so traffic signal, uh, that's, that's a whole nother discussion, I, it might be a while before, uh, warrants would be meant for a traffic signal there, but, um, you know, that's something that we work with the county continually on through all the intersections, when they meet a warrant, that's when the county is willing to put a traffic signal in there, so that is something...
But spacing won't be an issue, it'll be the warrants.
Say again?
Spacing won't be the issue.
Um, as far as on Street G, um, that, that is one thing that we are concerned about is the queuing of the vehicles, um, back on Street G, so that is one thing that, that we are working with them on to, to address, to get that, their, their, um, driveway off of Street G further to the north, so there's additional spacing between, uh, County Road sixteen and their driveway, so the queuing part of it, yes, we, we wanna, we need to work with the developer on that, um, better than what we're seeing here, so.
Okay, other questions, Councilor Contras?
Thank you, um, just wanted to verify, there is, um, I'm guessing all the little outlines around the buildings are all sidewalks?
Correct, yes.
Sidewalks, okay, just to make sure we have a sidewalk for, for the children who have to, you know, catch the bus or, I'm just trying to figure out too, but that, I guess that'd be something for the school bus, like where would they, I don't know. Just, you know, just make sure there's sidewalks, just to make it, you know, um, available for the kids to just get to their points or wherever they have to be moved up.
I guess one of the aspects that I like, uh, that I thought of, I guess when the other buildings were proposed and the two or three buildings that looked more like bigger monster buildings, um, pretty big masses here, I, when I see this proposal here, a little less dense, um, not a lot, but, but the breakup of it visually, I think, uh, to me is a little better than just the masses of a big L or U-shaped building.
In fact, if I may ask, why are some of the parking spots lime green and others not?
Th- those are garages, Councilmember.
Okay.
Those are garages, okay.
Alright.
And one of the changes working with engineering is at, um, building number one, as, uh, Mr. Littlehog mentioned, there's two garages shown in that island right, get this to work, right here. We may relocate those garages and shrink that island down so that we can slide up the road a little bit to give more stacking room. There's about twenty-four feet of island there that we could get rid of.
Councilor Brennan?
So from Seventeenth Avenue, if you were looking in, you would see the backup garage or, or would it, is there any type of, um...
There's a substantial amount of landscaping that they're proposing along, that was one of our requirements and one of the requirements, like if you look at the landscape plan, um, they're restricted because one of the other issues that was discovered during this process is that, um, they're working with Shakopee Public Utilities, they do not have an easement on the other side of the street, it's on poles and so they'll be relocating that main trunk line over to this side of the street and putting it underground, so we had to keep a pretty large green area to be able to underground those wires. So behind that will be a bunch of landscaping and then the garages.
Okay.
Um, Michael, this, uh, they're paying park dedication fees on this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, other questions of the developer, Councilor Whiting?
Uh, no questions, just a, a, a comment to kinda echo our Planning Commission, uh, and their comments about change from the three buildings and I agree that, uh, aesthetically, this is, uh, definitely more pleasing to the area than a bunch of pretty big buildings, so, uh, and you mentioned it as well. Uh, I also like the, uh, choices for, uh, the building, uh, uh, materials that they're gonna use, so I think it's gonna look nice and, uh, the landscaping, I think, will buffer some of those buildings, uh, garages and things like that, so, looks good.
And Mayor and Council, this'll be, I think, um, this is one of the new buildings under the new code, so we have seen a lot of these projects typically have been vinyl-sided, not had masonry, you'll notice the whole first floor in this is masonry and it's hardy, which is a much more durable material and I think to their credit, they're a, a long-term developer and they have long-term investors and they wanna make sure the building lasts a long time.
Uh, Councilor Lehman?
Safe to assume they're gonna have onsite, uh, snow removal and lawn mowing and all that stuff?
Uh, yes, our, our management team's contemplating contracting that out, but, um, yeah, they'll be managing snow.
Okay.
No.
Private roads.
We learned that they have onsite concierge garbage pickup, so.
Wow.
We'd appreciate if you'd stay off our top ten list.
That's right.
Um, I think some of these new, uh, building materials, and we're seeing contrasting colors, we're also seeing multiple, multiple colors. I think is good, I, you know, the, there's a couple examples in town, and, uh, you know, Darn, and, and the, the other townhomes over there, they're deco. And if you've taken any time to look at the new Shakopee flats on the riverfront, I drove around there every couple of weeks, and now some colors going on that, and three or four different colors, so it really breaks up the visual and the aspect, and it, to me, uh, it looks very appealing. So I appreciate these new building materials and the use of the different ones.
And Mayor and council, one of the big changes they made is they went to, which is more expensive, they went to a black window, uh, to try and give the building a little bit more depth.
If, if there's no other questions for the developer, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any question, but I, I would make a motion.
Well, then I'll just finish up. No other questions of staff? Does the city attorney have a, a comment? Okay.
Oh, go ahead.
Councilor Brennan?
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number zero-two, zero-two-two dash zero-zero-five, approving the amendment to planned unit development, District Number Seven, Summerlin Place. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, further discussion on this PUD, further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion passes, thank you very much.
All right, good luck, welcome. Well, you, you already were here, but.
I forgot to ask what the price point was.
Um, we'll have studios.
Sorry.
Um, we'll have studios, one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom homes, so, uh, studios will be starting at fourteen hundred, one beds at fifteen hundred, um, two bedrooms at two thousand, and three bedrooms at twenty-three hundred.
So you still can't afford it?
Thank you.
No problem.
Can't afford to live, to move out of the house I have.
I'm more interested in the garage space myself.
The garages, you like the garages, yeah.
And then not just one stall, either. Right, I'll take three of those, right? Um, excellent, thank you very much. Let's move ahead, eight AA, or eight A, the city bill list is in front of us. Uh, any comments, questions on that? Seeing none, we would move on to the liaison administration report, and we'll start down here.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have one tonight.
Not a problem. Councilor Whiting?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, just wanted to point out, uh, Councilmember Contreras and I did have a, a meeting, uh, we had our, uh, interview committee for, uh, boards and commissions. And just want to say, uh, uh, thank you for all our board members and commission members for, uh, stepping up and, and, uh, you know, we always have great candidates, uh, had some great people that are reapplying, uh, and so, uh, you know, that's great to have them, and thank you for doing that. And we, uh, welcome some, some fir-, uh, familiar faces and a couple new ones, so, uh, welcome.
I saw that, thank you.
What, uh, what did we have for turnout, do we have a lot of folks signing up, or?
Um, there was, uh, several, we had, uh, there was a couple we had, we couldn't find a home for, so, um, that's good. Not, not as many as we had in the past, and, uh, but there's been a few years where there was none, so.
Right.
It was great, we, everybody got, uh, not everybody, but we had a good, good fit.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, I had a scale meeting, first, uh, presentation at the meeting was put on by Prior Lake School District. And the second part of the meeting was Minnewakaton Sew. Work discussion, potential new location, moving, I think it was twenty-three, twenty-four, if everything works out. Larger, almost double, I think it was double capacity from what they currently have. Newer technology, they'll be able to aerate the, uh, piles and actually add air or take the air back in and run it through biofilters to reduce any kind of odors. Uh, that was pretty cool. Um, they'll have, uh, watering and a new process of turning with some new equipment that allow, uh, the breakdown process to be cut in half. So it's kind of a cool presentation, actually, it was, it was a lot of permitting, so we'll see, you know, it'll take some time, I guess. But it sounds like, uh, it's gonna be state-of-the-art technology. And then, uh, after that was, uh, DemCon, they did their presentation, and, and they kind of did an overview of the whole life of it, up to current. Lot of changes actually happening at both, so it's pretty informative, kind of enjoyed it.
Well, they're in the, DemCon's in the process of trying to get municipal waste.
They, yes, and they're going through a licensing pro- process also, but they also have other services that most people don't know that they offer. They actually have their own trucks, and they go to some of the high, uh, not users, but high.
Waste.
High makers or whatever. And, and collect it with their own trucks, so that was kind of, I didn't know that, but, you know, and then they're into the recycling side, separating, they're separating, uh, facility with the different plastics and the metals and the aluminums and all that stuff, so. It was pretty cool hearing both, uh, presentations. And then Monday, yesterday morning, one sixty-nine corridor coalition had its legislative meeting, uh, by Zoom. Had a pretty decent turnout from Minnesota legislators and senators, and, uh, Andrew Craig was there, and Nick Friends, and, um, oh, twenty-eight, Representative Albright, Senator Pratt, and a bunch of other ones. Uh, there's probably four or five that had to drop out at nine o'clock to go to, uh, another meeting. Uh, we went through our list of, uh, one sixty-nine related issues, this council's fully aware, uh, two eighty-two-nine in, in Jordan, um, that received, uh, eight million dollars of raised dollars, uh, Andrew Craig was.
Yeah, very instrumental on that.
Absolutely, and there was, uh, two point five million dollars that, uh, came in to help with that. So there's, there's dollars starting to, to come up, and there was a lot of support spoken by both sides of the island. One sixty-nine corridor coalition is a nonpartisan organization, uh, and, and we tout that because, uh, it's really about the road. You know? Um, so there's a lot of support on both sides. I'm, I'm pretty co- comfortable in that project, uh, but part of that project is, uh, a project further to the south, the fifty-nine. Once you open up two eighty-two and the flow is gonna be able to go through, it's gonna make the next smaller one, uh, fifty-nine kind of a dangerous, more unsafe, I should say. So they're looking at doing that one also, uh, much smaller project, um, but there was agreement by all the legislators that, uh, yeah, that makes sense. And then there's the Sand Creek Township by, uh, by the yard, where you've got the cement trucks that are coming out, and they really can't get up the speed. One of the things that was done right away was a ramp, uh, speed-up lane was added on the shoulder. But you also have the left turns crossing, so that, that project has got an overpass with some frontage roads. A lot of input from Sand Creek businesses right in that area, um, that actually changed that design a couple of times. So kudos to Bruce from, uh, Sand Creek Township for putting all the businesses together and, and running them meetings and getting all that input, because, uh, it was pretty valuable stuff. We went down, uh, down the list and got to one sixty-nine here, here in Shakopee, and, uh, you know, the cost for the restriping that seems to work so well is, is very minimal. For some odd reason, the MINDOT or whoever doesn't favor that approach, but, uh, the drivers, uh, moving public certainly does. You know, we talked about spot improvements that could be done, uh, in this river crossing area. And two examples that come to mind for any, for us, when we travel south on one sixty-nine, you're coming up on Old Shakopee Road, and you've got that third lane, uh, and, and it just goes away.
Yep.
And then you drive for, you know, you come over and you drive for a little while, and pretty soon, boom, there it is again. If that third lane could be extended, that's a small spot improvement that would have huge.
There's a bridge in there, though, I think.
Well, but the, you could re-straight, but, or actually that bridge was designed for.
An extra.
For an extra lane, but where you're.
There's a smaller one.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of room, and there's an on-ramp, too. Yeah, I was just looking at it, there's plenty of room on the north side there, so there's, there's other spot improvements that could be made, we discussed them, spot improvements. But, but really, the bottom line is, uh, the last, uh, corridors of commerce, proposal, I think it was a hundred and fifteen million dollars, was the full-fledged fix, it was next on the docket before everything went south with pandemics and whatever, all the other stuff and the pandemic spending. But really, you know, you can take a funnel and make the opening of the funnel larger by fixing all these things, so commuters can get there quicker, but it's the smaller side of the funnel that, that controls the capacity. And in our case, it happens to be the bridge over the river. You know, we talked about specifically about the backup you get, uh, coming from thirteen, one sixty-nine north. It's all the way down the ramp, it's clear out into Savage. And then you have Shakopee's and Prior Lake coming up eighteen, and it's backed up all the way up past sixteen on eighteen, trying to get out, you know, onto the northbound, so, so really, it's, it's the, the bridge fixed, and some improvements north of the bridge to add a lane that needs to happen, but. Very receptive, Golden Valley is, uh, was there with three representative, they've got a pretty big project, I think it's by, is it Pillsbury up there?
I saw that on your agenda, and then I couldn't figure out where, where truly they were talking about.
I, I think it's by, I, I want to say it's Pillsbury, and it's just, uh, south of, uh, Medicine Lake Road. Um, but a lot of their improvements tie into further up to Medicine Lake Road, and, and you know what? We welcome anything that's one sixty-nine related, because, uh, they actually had a design, a, a rough design, it's not cast in stone, and, uh, that's gonna be a study going on in that, too, a lot of congestion in that area.
How much commerce travels on that road?
Well, you know, I guess sometimes having, uh, commerce moving and products and services flowing is, on one side, it's a bad thing, on the other side, it's a really good thing, so. Good productive meeting, I, I, I think there's gonna be, there's a lot of support on both sides of the aisle for some bonding dollars for some of these projects, so.
That'd be great. Councilor Lehman, thank you very much, uh, for that report. Um, Councilor Brennan?
Um, Spuck meeting was last week, and we finalized the, the territory agreement with Minnesota Valley Electric, and, yep, and Spuck and the staff did a great job in getting that done, and it was a good thing.
Well, congratulations, that's been in the works for a long time, and, uh, congratulations to leadership over there to, to get it done, congrats.
That's all I have.
All right. Um, for my mayor report, I, um, I met with the county and, uh, county commissioner in regard to trying to find a, uh, a way forward, uh, on this library, of which generated our discussion today, and we'll just continue to have more discussion on the library, so. That's my report for that, and now we'll go to our administration report.
Uh, just two things for me, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, I will approach both the SMSC and the, uh, uh, county in regards to the County Forty-two discussion, which I have, I've let you know about, uh, over the last couple of days or so. Uh, and, and hopefully try to come to some agreement in regards to the amount of money that the city, uh, had put into County Road Forty-two, uh, when a portion of that was not owned by the SMSC, and now both sides of that stretch are owned by the SMSC. Uh, and so we'll be discussing that, uh, which I'm sure will be multiple discussions into the future. Uh, but, uh, that process at least will initially start tomorrow afternoon at the IWG, uh, uh, meeting. Uh, and then for the politicos out there, uh, you know, today was a big day for, uh, those that are interested in politics. And, uh, when Councilor Lehman was talking about, uh, you know, the other side of the aisle, I just had a flashback of, you know, it's so nice that we're not in parliamentary form of government where you would have many aisles. You know, literally, we have, we have one aisle that we have to, to, to navigate, so, uh, uh, but with that being said, uh, the redistricting maps were released today. Uh, the second congressional district, which Shakopee, uh, and Scott County as a whole is in, uh, uh, was changed in a major way, uh, which was interesting. Uh, not a lot of, not a lot of changes for us, though, uh, as far as that's concerned, but obviously we now have until March twenty-ninth to, uh, pass, uh, what we need to do in regards to redistricting, and, and we'll be talking a lot about that more in the future.
And was that only, I saw that in that district moved more to the west and the south, deeper to the south? And shortened up from the east side, that's only the congressional districts that we're talking about here?
Uh, that was the one that caught my eye, I haven't spent a lot of time looking at, uh, anything yet, uh, they just came out today, so.
There may be a couple people living in the wrong district.
That's always the, the big.
Right, no, I, um, okay, um, moving forward then to number nine. Is there any other business before this, Councilor, Councilor Lehman?
I have one, Mayor, and I didn't want to take it up under the, on the consent item for the storm and sewer delinquent. Two questions on that, actually, we had the refuge delinquency that we were, um, adopting, certifying. And then we had the sewer and the storm, but we weren't certifying it, we were just automatically putting it on the tax rolls. So two different processes, it looks like. And then the second question I had, and I don't, there's just seems to be a lot of like twenty, thirty, forty dollar, was there a billing cycle that caused that, or is?
So I, I do know that at the end of the year there, that Republic had a little billing tweak, too, and that might have added to the problem or not, I don't know. I got an odd bill, and it wasn't a quarterly statement, it was for, I think, just for the month of December, because their, their quarters were off of cycle, I believe. I'd have to talk to the bookkeeper at home, but I think that's what we came up with.
But here what, here's what I'm looking at, Mayor, the, the storm and sewer, I mean, it's just like twenty, twenty-three, twenty-eight, forty-one, twenty-eight. It's just all such small number, I get these five forty-four, hundred dollars, three thirty, these folks are not paying their bill. But these other small ones, there's so many small ones that are sewer and so, and small, uh, storm, or sewer, uh, s- yeah, storm and sewer, that, that the overall amount combined is sixty, seventy bucks. And it's like, why is there such a long list of such small amounts? Was it a billing cycle error?
Uh, so Mayor and council, there were two actions tonight, one was adopting the, the certification of assessments on the utilities, uh, which is the smaller list that we had. There was, I think, eleven properties on that list, um, so those you adopted tonight, the other one's setting a public hearing on the delinquent refuse bills. And that it, it, there was, um, I think on that initial list, there was five hundred and sixty-five something, and I think about eighty-five has paid since we had that initial listing. I know you got the updated list, uh, today, but it did appear that there were a lot of one-month, two-month type bills that were on there. So I'm not sure if there was confusion between, we're starting to receive the bill for the next refuse company. So we'll see, the letters will be sent out this, tomorrow, and we'll see if that's what majority of those cases are, is that, you know, you maybe missed one payment and you weren't aware, or you paid the other company thinking that you're all caught up with your refuse bills.
And then just my last comment on the, on the changeover to the new garbage company. We actually received, uh, our garbage bill before we got the service, so we paid for the first quarter. So we basically prepaid for the first quarter, which, uh, is fine.
You pay ahead.
Yeah.
That is correct, with refuse bills, you're paying a mon- a month ahead, where with the other services, you're paying based on your usage, so you're paying.
Cause you don't know what that usage is, got it, yep, all right, very good.
Um, number nine, any other business before this council? Seeing none, Councilor Brennan?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, March first at seven o'clock. Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Contreras, further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Aye, those opposed, that motion passes, we stand adjourned at eight twenty-eight.